All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Pat Gales and I'm chairperson of the Dayton Historical Commission. It's March 8th, and this is our monthly meeting here at Town Hall. This is a hybrid meeting. But we're all here except for John, who's trying to get in by Zoom. So if John is able to get in, we've had some technical difficulties. We'll do all roll call votes. And it's being recorded, so we're good to go. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's coming.
Yeah, okay, you're both agree.
Yeah.
Let's check the sound real quick, too, when he comes on.
Okay.
And then you guys should be all set.
Can you hear us, John?
He's connecting to audio.
Connecting.
Just muted.
Can you unmute, John?
You can't. Can't hear you.
I have to unmute.
Can I unmute him?
Hello?
There we go. Okay, there we go. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Sorry about that.
Okay, so we're good. All right. So we'll have, we'll be doing roll call votes, and here we go. Secretary's report. Everyone's received the Secretary's minutes for February 8th, 2022. I'd like a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of February 8th, 2022.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of February 8th, 2022.
Moved. Uh, so moved.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, and we'll vote. Oh, yes, we'll vote. Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. John?
Aye.
All right. The minutes are accepted. Our budget expenses and balances is the same as it was last month. We haven't had any expenditures. It's $725.50 with $300 committed to the overlay map with an expendable amount of $425.50. So there's that. At... I want to do one more thing under the budget, and then I'm going to ask for a motion to go out of order so Joanne can not be out all night with us. I know you really want to stay.
Of course.
That's for real. Our FY23 budget request will be reviewed on Wednesday, March 16th, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting. And we can be there to support our budget. So I will plan on being there, and anyone else is welcome to join me. Under... Today, we had a Zoom meeting with Aaron Weston from CAI Technologies. And this is about the overlay mapping. And I'm bringing it up here because there is going to be an expense that we'll have for FY23. So let me explain. We met with Aaron Westens from CAI Technologies. He does the Dayton GIS mapping. And then with Stacy Spies was there Mike Mullin, the Town Administrator, and Lisa Tetral from the Assessors, and Stephanie, can't think of her last name, from the Assessor's office.
It's S.P.E.
Well.
Specter.
Yeah. To kind of talk about the overlay map project and what it entailed and the cost, because the cost is $1,900. We're trying to see if we could get it for less money using existing programming that we have. So, as it turns out, what we need for the grant is a hard copy base map and the overlay map onto Dayton's GIS. The cost is $1,900, which we have $300 set aside and $300 from Stacy, with the balance coming from, Mike Mullin said he would find it in the Town Administrator's account. The option was that you could go down and just get the hard base map copy for $1,300. And it's just a big map of the town, and Stacy would go in with a Sharpie and plot all of the historic homes from our survey on that map. So there wouldn't be anything online that you could go see. It would just be that. So for the $600 difference, it was like, the GIS mapping is the way to go. So you have the overlay. So when you look at the GSI mapping, I learned more about mapping than I ever thought. Someone clicks on that property, and it will link them to the Form B that will be, you know, and the information, historical information, that it has historical stuff to it. So, in going forward, so that's for FY22. So we'll be spending that. Going forward in FY23, each year, there would be a cost that could fluctuate between $200 and $600 to update the GIS mapping and also provide another hard copy. So Mike suggested that we amend our budget that we submitted, add the $600 to the professional and technical line to cover that yearly cost. So. Would like to entertain a motion to amend the Historical Commission FY23 budget by adding $600 to the professional and technical line. Is there a motion?
Question. So you're not transferring it from another line? You're increasing it?
We're increasing it, yes.
So moved.
A second. Any further discussion? Any questions?
I do have just one question. This is based on the GIS, County Assessors GIS online map?
Yeah, that's, the overlay would go on that.
So when you click one of, when you click one of, one of those, it only allows you to click one at a time? You don't know what I'm talking about? Have you ever used the GIS?
Yeah, I've used the...
Okay, I use it all the time.
I'm a little, I'll tell you, I'm a new fight at it, but I have tried it.
Click it instead of giving you the historic house there, if there is one. It just, it gives you the property cards from the Assessors.
Right, right.
So you're saying this would be a, what is that noise? You hear?
It's John's house.
Oh, okay.
That's probably my daughter.
Okay. His daughter.
So would this be similar to where you property at a time, and you would, instead, you would get the historic data of that property, if there is any? Is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah.
And does this run online? A variant of what's already online that would be for our purposes?
It would, it'll be an overlay on it, because there was also, and I didn't get a chance to look at this, like today, a column that would drop down and also shows for that property. PC uses example of vernal pools. That overlay would show the vernal pools, and there was a way that you could move so you could see everything that was connected to it.
That she's, somebody is willing to enhance the current?
Yeah, yeah, that's what it is. That's what the overlay is, yeah.
To the Dayton property map, right?
That's what the overlay is.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
And that, what's the cost on something like that?
$1,900.
$1,900?
That's to this year's, to get it all established. And then next year, the motion is for the $600 is to add any other properties that we would do in FY23. Right.
So when you're using this, say, on applied online, yeah, it's... Would it show all the properties first that we're interested in looking for?
I don't think so, Bill. I'm not, I think, because when you use the GIS...
You can only do one at a time.
You can only do one at a time. It's either by address.
That's okay, you know.
Yeah.
But you have to know where to look first in order to get the information about... You only say you want to look at some house that you know is historical or on the...
There would be a link there that tells you there's, there's a historical thing. I think it's either...
Otherwise, you're clunky.
And I'm not, I, to be truthful, I can't remember where you said it would come up, but it would come up so someone would know that there is a historical connection to this house.
I have a question. Is it possible that there's a similar town that we could snoop around on theirs?
Yes. Stacy used West Newbury as a sample.
All right. So maybe we can do that, Bill, like if we go to the West Newbury?
Yeah.
Map and kind of snoop around and say?
A GIS map for that?
Yeah.
Right, that specific town.
That has been modified.
That has been modified so that we can model it.
I think it was West Newbury, you know. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. And that passes. You mean, it's going, thank you. So that's done. I will send an information to Mike and to Leanne, I guess. Mike and Leanne about the motion. Okay. Since Joanne Racine is sitting here with us, and her house is under the Historical House Marker Program, I'll entertain a motion to take the Historical House Marker Program out of order. So move, take the Historical House Marker Program out of order. Is there a second?
No second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none? Rafa?
Okay, I receive an application.
You have to vote first.
Oh, sorry.
Orders taken out of order.
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye. Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Okay, now we're going out of order. Go ahead, Rafa.
Okay, so I receive an application from our guest tonight, Joanne Racine. She lives at 624 Middle Street, North Dayton, and I approve it.
I'm sorry, we didn't, I didn't send out a digital copy of this, but I'll scan it and send it to you later.
I have one.
Oh, no, I have one. Thank you. All right, thank you.
So the house was built circa 1770, and it's colonial, according to the deed that Helene Barley had reported. And that was just there this afternoon, and it's in very good condition, unless there's something that you're not telling us. Okay, I believe in the second page, you have a copy of the deed. I understood most of...
It's hard to...
Very hard to decipher some of these, because it's really ancient cursive writing. But even though the pen, the writing is beautiful, there's some words that I didn't quite understand. But nevertheless, you highlighted.
Well, we see April 16th, 1770. Did you got the land or the home? By Willie, so I'm not sure if it's... I'm going to Abayah Barra. Abayah, I can't make it out.
Walker.
Walker.
Walker, yeah.
That's Walker, right?
If he built it, then...
You would say circa 1770?
Yeah, yeah. We always thought it was around 1750 because of the collection molding inside, but I don't...
And it would be called the William Walker House?
Yes, it was originally called, when I bought the house, there was a sign down in my basement. It was a Walker-Taliesin House, because the Taliesins lived there in the 1800s.
Now, do you have pictures? It says in Form B that there are pictures at the Dayton Historical Society that show different...
I think there is one. And I don't remember what year it was. I want to say the 1900s. Yeah, because before that, I mean, they would probably have the Gera types, you know, like tin types or something. So I think there is one there. Because I know when I went to, when I bought the house, I went to find out information on my house, and I did copy it. There is now, I don't know. That was 41 years ago.
Do we know where William Walker was buried, or?
I believe he was buried in the cemetery right in back of, there's a field on both sides of me. Well, actually, there was. Now, there's two houses, and there's a cemetery back. And most of the people that were in the Walker House, and I think there was a Walker House that was falling down back in the 60s or 70s that the Evangelos lived in. I think all those people were buried in that cemetery.
They're like a pride.
Taliesins also.
Okay.
That cemetery in back of like where Evangelos' house was, or your house?
It was in back of, that was originally my field.
Oh, okay.
Over there, that was part of my house, if I remember correctly, before I bought it. So that, that's in back of like...
This property is it on now?
It belongs to the town. There is a, like a path, I guess it's wide enough for a car, and it's right between the Evangelos' house and Marty Evangelos'. But the Evangelos, well, the Evangelos have passed away, so now...
What makes you think it's somebody in the town?
They take care of it.
Hmm?
They take care of it. The town maintains it, the cemetery. I have no idea. All I know is that...
If they maintain it, then it's a town cemetery.
I believe it. The town maintains...
I didn't know there were any town-owned cemetery.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
No, sir. In fact, the town maintains 25 cemeteries. It's about 54, 55 cemeteries, and of those, 25 maintain.
What about the, the famous church on Elm there, the...
That's their cemetery. The Unitarian Cemetery is their cemetery.
The town?
No, that's the church.
But the town maintains the veterans cemetery, which is adjacent to the Unitarian churches cemetery.
I know somebody...
Okay, so it's your 60 acres of land? Wow.
Where was the dahlia farm? Walker's had a dahlia farm. Really? I didn't know that, because my ex-husband loved dahlias, and he must have had like...
Well, there you go. Now you know why.
The gold Joe Walker's dahlia farm. I'm asking you, if there were other Walkers, I'm not saying that they lived in the... Yeah, I know the... It was in that area, and it was Walker's dahlia farm. Wow. Animals and vegetables, but...
Do we have anything else?
All I, considering that this house was built during the pre-colonial times, I think it's definitely worth a marker. It's just, so how many houses do we know?
Right.
It left, you know, that date back from this period, so. I'm looking at historical significance, besides the fact that the house is...
Didn't tell your father?
I was? A lot of cannabis?
No, no cannabis at that point.
Not yet. Yeah, anything that's from that century, to me, I think it's definitely significant. The, you know, the ratio of old houses being demolished and disappearing. Need to save every bit of history. So I approve this application for a marker. That's all I can say.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Joanne Racine's application for a historical, that historical marker for 624 Middle Street. I so moved.
A second?
Thank you. And we'll vote. Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Yes.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Okay.
Next step would be I will hook you up with the sign maker, Mr. Raff.
I brought a check, so I didn't know if I paid you right now. Okay.
It's arranged between you and him.
Okay.
I'll hook you up with him. Congratulations.
Thank you. Am I all set?
Yes, you're all set. Can we leave?
Because you do want to come and join us. We have an empty spot, you know.
Oh, I know. I'm still passing up.
All right, think about it.
I gotta go do my taxes. That's the problem.
Thank you.
Going to happen.
Fine.
I'm going to get it all set.
So while we're under House Marker Program, just a reminder that we have the marker ceremony for March 31st at 4:00 PM at the Ganon Household on 2150 Pleasant Street. I will post this, since probably the majority of us will be there.
It doesn't rain.
I know. I did talk to Karen today. She's quite excited. And we will be inviting the selectman and Town Administrator. Do you want to do that?
Invite everyone. Invite the whole town.
The whole town? Come anywhere.
Party.
I want to invite her, though.
I know.
Block of entire block and have a block party or something.
Do you want to notify our, okay, you take care of that. Thank you.
Bye, Karen.
And Leanne at the Selectman's office, so she can let the Selectman and Mike Mullin know. Okay. Going back to our agenda, to unfinished business. Pam, did you have any update on the...
I have no update. I'm sorry.
The plaque, okay, that's all right. Bristol can continue that.
I will.
Segregated storage and inventory, we're just continuing working on that. We'll do some more when the weather's a little warmer. And Rafa's going to reach out one more time to the Bristol Aggie about the display that we talked to them about, because that kind of determines what we want to use from segregated school, so.
Forgot about us.
Actually, we probably did.
Yeah. We, we had talked about goal and mission statement for the segregated schoolhouse. I reached out to a friend of mine over in Rehoboth, who's on the Historical Commission. They're meeting Thursday night, so she will see Kathy Potter and will ask if they have a sample that they've used. And I said, oh, great, that would be wonderful. In the meantime, is there someone that kind of wants to work on a mission statement? Or a mission statement usually tells the why. It exists, who is going to serve and how it's going to serve, like three simple sentences. Short, concise, I don't know, one or two people to take this on.
You mean for why?
Yeah, for our, for Dayton's mission statement. Yeah.
Do we have to, why do we need to save the school?
Yeah. Why do we want it to be a museum, a local history museum? Who is it going to serve and, like, how is it going to do it? So.
Volunteers.
I'm looking for volunteers.
Um, please, I thought Lerna had said, or Pat had said, that the windows had really been altered of the National Historic Register.
Ah, gotcha. If it has been alt, if it has been altered, yeah. But the structure, foundation is still there.
Foundation is still there. National Historic Register, okay.
I think the roof has been changed.
On that because of the alteration. Okay, but, gotcha. Okay.
So actually, I was, I was reviewing the packet
Yep.
that Joanne started about all the estimates
Yep.
from four years ago. The letting would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 and $12,000. We're talking about four years ago. I'm sure the prices have gone up. And also, the estimates for fixing the roof, fixing the windows, fixing the door, I mean, replacing those two doors with historical replicas. The flooring. I don't see any, anything about building, like a laboratory, like a toilet inside. Because there's an outhouse, but that's going to be demolished, right? The outhouse, or are they going to keep?
It's not usable.
Not usable, so they're going to keep it. But can it be, can it be used?
No, it cannot be used. Put it there just as, just to be pretty.
To do decoration.
Yeah, that's all.
The pretty, the pretty. So it's kind of like enbase the sense of what the schoolhouse would be.
Exactly.
So whether they're going to build a toilet inside, a running, with running water?
They would, I mean, if we're going to have meetings, like if we...
That has to be added to the estimates.
Serve food or whatever.
Because I didn't see that at all.
Right. So that's, when we get to FY25, that's what those architectural plans and designs begin to, that kind of thing, like bathrooms. There was a bathroom in there at one point in time, because the Girl Scouts used to meet there, and it was in...
Oh, yeah, that's right. I remember the little hole.
Yeah, there was a little hole there, the toilet, and all of that's been taken out. This, you know, but it used to be there, so.
Sewerage. It's sewage.
Sewerage across, yeah.
But the problem with putting a bathroom in there is that you now have to heat it all winter.
Yeah, right, right.
Pipes, like, to...
All right.
And it has, it would be a public building, so we have to meet our disability requirements, too.
Yep, all that was...
Bathroom size and access.
Yeah.
So it's, you don't have to heat the building?
You mean, I can turn it off?
No, well, somebody.
It's going to be Rafa. I'll turn it off.
Well, I think first, let's, let's kind of hold that one for a couple of years.
We hope it was allowed to use an outhouse, though. They don't have...
Theirs was grandfathered in, because they were there like from, what did I say, 1968? Yeah. So that was grandfathered in. So, so, but if we're going to keep moving forward and thinking about this, we do need a mission statement, because that's going to drive everything else. And I just, so, volunteers. I see the...
Didn't, didn't the restoration of that schoolhouse come, come before the town at a town meeting?
Years, yeah.
And was there an estimate?
That's what Rafa was talking about. There was.
Well, how much was the original?
Oh, where are they talking? I don't remember.
I don't remember. It was in 2018, I believe.
Yeah.
And we just talked about the funding?
Yeah.
Yes, so it was pretty high.
And one of the problems when they went, they had the CPC funding.
They had recommended that.
They got, they were recommending CPC funding. But when it went to that town meeting, the problem was they couldn't answer the questions like, what was it going to be used for? What was the purpose? What other expenses would there be, you know, so that...
Were those questions asked by someone in the audience?
Yes, yes.
And so it sounds to me, and I thought about this before this meeting, is, is certainly, and you couldn't really answer the question was the problem, right?
Well, yeah, I wasn't on it, but the people couldn't.
We need to be able to answer that question.
That's, that's a mission statement. That's, yeah.
That's, that's a hard one, because, I don't know.
Well, we have time to work on our mission statements.
So that it makes sense, that so that we can...
So, volunteers.
Well, I'll volunteer. I'll be one.
Want to work on one, John? You want some help with someone?
Yeah, sure, if anybody else wants to volunteer with me.
Rafa, you want to work with John?
No.
I'm sorry, what?
Rafa, I'm asking you if you want to, you want to join, you be John, you and John to...
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay, we have you and Rafa will work on the statement. And you guys can do it through email, whatever. However...
How many words do you?
How many words? Half.
One, five, six sentences?
Couple of sentences.
Couple, okay.
Well, where would be focused on being able to answer a question like that again? In other words, if this ended up being funded by CPC and then ended up at the, at the DR Auditorium or whatever, you have to be able to answer those questions specifically.
Yeah.
We want to sell, yeah, we want to sell the plan to the town.
This is the first...
To say, you know, the purpose of the school is to join a museum, okay, period.
No, you got to, if they can ask you five, six questions, you got to answer them.
Your mission statement will be one to two, no, not one to two, two to three concise sentences, basically, telling like what, you know, the school is going to be.
The purpose.
A local history museum. Why and who is it going to serve? What you're talking about comes further on down the line is your rationale as to how you're going to meet that.
If you can't answer those questions, there's no point in doing any work to get to the town meeting, because you're going to be blown out of order again, assuredly.
But that's, so we got time to like build up that case. And the first part is to do the mission statement. Then you're talking about rationale to answer those questions, predict those questions, have your answers prepared and ready. I agree. I agree with you.
You should be thinking about that not two weeks before the meeting.
No.
That should be part of this discussion.
Why don't you do it, Ken?
What?
Why don't you do it? Why don't you do it?
The more ideas, the better.
Since you have all these wonderful ideas and stuff. Would you make a motion? I have someone make a motion. So I'll be on it.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion that Rafa and Jonathan, former, be on the committee to write a mission statement for the segregated schoolhouse.
Nobody else wants to be on?
Anybody else want to join? Okay, that's the motion. I'll entertain.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, we'll vote. All in favor, Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John? And I'm also an aye. Thank you guys for stepping up. Okay. No, a draft or something next meeting would be fine. Great. The Taunton Rail Trail and the Sweet Knoll, Sweets Knoll information. I sent you all the PowerPoint presentation from March 3rd. I was there and Ken was there. That was kind of enlightening.
I thought it was.
Yeah. So DCR is basically doing the trail from behind 1712 on Somerset Avenue there, all the way up to Sandpiper Lane. So it'll go that railroad bridge with the open ties all along there. So our role is to devise, to find some of the historic spots to highlight along there. So we need a list of spots like the first ferry landing, which is basically indicated on the old maps, like behind Gardner's. Sweets Knoll, of course, has some significant history. The railroad stations, like there was a segregated station, a few others, so we would, you know, think about those. And that's all that I really could come up with, just brainstorming with myself. So are there any others? Bill, I know you're really interested in railroads and probably...
Yeah, I, well, I wasn't going to bring this up because it isn't really, it's not on the agenda for me to talk about. And currently, we'll say hot on the trail of where those stations were exactly.
Okay, yep.
So there was, with the help of Tom Ferry, because I thought he might know something more, I was focusing on the Dyton, I would call it South Dyton because it's on Main Street.
Yep.
Freight Depot.
Yep.
Which I have a picture of just prior to it being torn down in the 80s. Copy of the picture of it. It's pretty bad looking.
Yep.
And...
I know exactly what you're talking about.
I also have a picture of it in its heyday. And the problem is, I couldn't figure out exactly where it was. So with Tom's help, I was able to get a website that has, what it's called Historic Aerial. So it, somebody's put together topographical maps of whatever area you want, going back to like 1880. And also it has aerial maps, meaning photographs from something like an airplane or something back in 1960. So I have, in that, I was able to see the railroad station in the 1960 map, because it was there until 1882 or 1883, and when it was torn down. So I'm, and it has measurement, you know, tools, so you can actually where from Maine is what... And so it was right behind, well, the old post office, the current post office building. It was set back about 85 feet behind the building. It was, the east side was facing the railroad track.
Yep.
So when you're looking at it from Main Street, the track would be on its right side, and on the left would be, actually, it would be the, because the post office, that post office that was actually not there, it was in 1960, though. So it's really behind, you know, that we used to be the Dyton Circus, now it's not a rest offering.
I know what building you're talking about, when I moved in.
It was, it was kind of in the woods. So probably people never read this art, because I think there were trees in front of it.
Yeah.
So I have, that's one. And then I think that there was a passenger station in Dyton. I mean, not, not all of Dyton, but right behind it, on the rail line.
Yeah.
I'm going to hit the Historical Society to see if I can find a picture of it.
Could you do me a favor? Just make a list of those points and email them to everyone, so that, because that's the basis of our beginning of the listing of historical sites.
Right, right.
You know, so, you know, you talked about that depot, the passenger station, we know there was a segregated station, there was a Dyton, Dyton station on Somerset Ave, Old Somerset Ave.
Well, there were five stations.
Yeah, just make a list of those and like, like an approximate like location where they were, like, I don't know, like I, you know, behind...
The only one that's in, not its location, but the only one, the passenger station was behind, it was just a little ways up the north, up from the freight depot that I just saw.
Yeah.
And it was behind... Oh, well, you know where, there's a place called Teescape Land.
Yep, I know right where you are.
Behind that, there's an open area that was owned by the railroad.
Yep.
And the rest of it is just now, you can tell what the station would be because that's an area where the station went. And there was no county street.
Right, right.
So all you have was Sunset Avenue there. And it would have been, so if you wanted to get a train from that part of town, you would get dropped off with a horse and buggy or something. And so the other, and then the other three, there's, there was the one in the segregated station, which was raised up, was stairway down to the dully where the tracks were. And that was strictly a passenger station. And then the other two stations were in the North Dyton. They called them North Dyton, even though it's actually in Torn, because it's still over the line.
So those will probably be past Sandpiper Lane, because Sandpiper Lane's across from where Mechanics Bank is. So, but still include them.
Two stations there. There was the passenger station, and separated by a couple hundred feet, was a freight depot. So there were two freight depots in Dyton, one at the North Dyton Station, and one in just like...
Take all of that information, digest it very concisely for us, like the points like here, this is, this was a landing, this was a landing, the station. And, you know, we can add that to our list. That would be great. Because we'll work on that. And if you can email that to everyone, I'll draft a list. There were also boat landings along the way, too, because there was the first ferry landing. There was one, I think, like kind of behind Princess House, which is a little further on, but there could be others in there for boats. So I'll work on some of the research for that, for the landings. But, and then we'll put all of that information together, and then we can develop some kind of, which ones are the priority, which ones are the most important, and all of that. So, great start.
As well as a list I could make, just got pretty good at, actually, one of the best ways of getting topographic, current topographically, it's not necessarily Google, but, well, it is Google, but it's vectored out from one of those maps that we were talking about earlier. There's a way to, instead of just seeing the little outlines of the properties.
Yeah, yeah.
You connect, there's a little click thing, which will give you the equivalent.
Right.
And what's nice is it gives you the option of old Google, you know, in other words, some of them were done in recently.
Right.
Some of them were done as early as 2003. Anyway, so that, so I was thinking, it's just an extra sheet, printer sheet. So you'd have a sheet go all the way from Main Street, where the freight depot was, all the way up to the North Dyton Station.
Okay.
And then have boxes or something showing the stations.
Sounds good. If you could get that together for us, that would be great.
When you're in the future, if some kind of trail or bike trail or whatever is ever built, which I'm quite dubious, to be honest. But because...
Oh, the DCR one, if their plan is...
Well, all of that rail line is fractionated. It's owned by some private property owners.
No, no.
DCR.
DCR, no.
Who? DCR.
Who's that?
It's the State Department of...
Department of Conservation and Recreation.
No, that's not true. I've been looking at this for years. I have all the property... No, it's, the...
Well, anyway, we can't discuss that tonight.
It's owned partially by Massachusetts. It's owned partially. A lot of the line is owned by, in fact, the majority of the line is owned by the TMLP, not Massachusetts Transit Program.
That's, you're talking Taunton. At the meeting.
Well, that's what I'm dubious about, Annie, because you'd have to, you'd have to get the, and I talked to the TMLP guy.
This DCR project is on schedule. Phase one began this week. In fact, there were people out from their company today, when I was walking around, that they were out. So, but our goal is to make the historic thing. That's our job.
You could have like, you know how you have trees that are, when you go hiking, for instance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hiking trail, or bike trail. You have like a little stick with a thing in it angle and, and you could have, like for the stations, you could have his, it was this.
Right. That's what, that's what we're...
And have...
Pat is asking you to come up with perhaps five or six of those, Bill, with just a sentence that says, when this was operational, where did it take passengers to, perhaps, did it take...
I don't know. That's, that's...
So, all right, Bill, take the information that you have on those stations from North Dyton to the, to the main depot. Put it into a...
Five pages.
That's perfect, you know, and send it, and email to everyone so that we can review it and then...
And then we'll know where that's end.
And that's, that's the beginning. Right. The DCR meeting also, we have, they have another listening session scheduled for March 29th for people, for stakeholders, and we are one of the stakeholders. I'm not sure if it's going to be a Zoom or in person. They didn't say. So anyway, that's where that project stands. It's moving forward. Does anyone else have any questions about it? Also, anyone who is interested in looking to see what else is possibly along that rail trail, you know, feel free to add more information.
I'd like to add some wildlife, osprey nest.
That's not our forte.
I want to add, like, you know, this is where an osprey nests and, I don't know.
21 survey and planning grant status. Stacy was at that meeting today. I also asked her for an update, is, and she sent me an email, and she says, "The field work is nearly done. The tricky part is finding the sweet spot where there isn't too much snow on the ground and there's no precipitation. All but five buildings have been photographed." She's completed field notes and building descriptions for about half the buildings, but only a few have been typed up so far. Approximately 80 of the buildings have basic history information. That is, does the building appear on historic maps? And if so, who was the owner? And about half also have added census or city directory information or deed information. I try and put together a framework of names and dates before I head to the Historical Society. Everything is on track, and she is coming to the Historical Society on March 14th for more research, so I will be meeting her there for that. So that's moving along. Anyone have anything else under that precedent?
Grants?
No, nope. Well, I'm getting there. Next, grant application, CPC.
Okay, so that's going to be pretty short. It was unanimous, the application is unanimously approved. That means it goes on now to a town meeting.
Right.
June, and...
How much money are we asking? How much money do we...
Twenty-five thousand.
So the thing is, though, I'm familiar to check something about that, about future CPC. Oh, I'm able to lasso these people, even though they have a preconditioned approval attitude about kindly and prior to the last go-round. I don't, I really don't feel comfortable pitching the next one unless we have some, lots of cool things to show them about the results of the first two go-rounds that I just want to keep them charged, you know what I'm saying, as far as interest on it? I don't want them to think we're just, you know, and besides, we're talking about, if we don't get another grant, we don't know at all, that's an uncertainty about his future grant or anything. So we, if you count, for instance, the fact that, or if you discount the fact that we did get 12 and a half K on the first go-round, if you don't count that, and actually, there's another question embedded in that, but I will say that we're talking really about a $100,000 project as far as this. So that's not shop change. I mean, that's quite a bit of money, even CPC, give out necessarily 100K money. But I think it's quite doable with them. However, I would like to, and I don't know exactly what, but we need to be able to demonstrate some of the results of this, the first 50K. That's all I'm saying.
So I'm, so as you were saying that, I was thinking, once this project is finished, we will have Form Bs, we will have a base map.
And they look great. I mean, what I've seen of her work, you know.
But we'll have things, so perhaps the thing would be to go to a CPC meeting and show them the products.
And they know that at some point really like historical kinds of things, we have to get on the CPC, say, some people who are interested in history that maybe would not happen again and with a different...
Yeah, I mean, interests change with boards, like that.
But I think like, once we get our final products and the project is over, we give them a, like a project review thing.
So this thing of getting the public involved, which is so important, in other words, the mission statement and all that, this whole thing is integrated into, in other words, the CPC or the CPC effort, or the CPC... You're petitioning the CPC for funds, and you'll be petitioning the public later on or the vote. And you want to, you want to have a, like a, that whole thing should be like a conglomerate that speaks for itself, because you can reference one thing and look at this part here, this grade, you know, not just the, her work. But, in other words, you want to, this is part of that idea of bringing, educating the public in history, which is absolutely essential, because you're going to be able to go to do some of the things.
Which kind of like leads into the next part of the agenda. First, before we go there is, just hold that thinking.
Yep.
So we certainly want to thank CPC for their support, you know, for that funding.
Another question I might have is, what are your plans in terms of...
Oh, I don't have any plans. It's our plans.
What time, what's the... What, what time, what's, are we gonna be hitting them up again prior, well, I guess you would, you'd hit, because June would be the, next June would be the, if you had already applied, C P C on phase three, say, for twenty-five K, worst case. That's enough time in there, but you don't wanna start, um, you wouldn't wanna bring the proposal to the C P C, like, as soon as you can, I wouldn't do that. Till you brought up some, there's plenty of time, you've got till June.
We actually have, yeah.
Or February, or maybe January, prior to the June, to be safe. So that gives you plenty of time to have some information and stuff that you can use in my pitch for the next one. I don't wanna go in there just cold without any, say, oh, remember, lots of things is the same thing.
No, Bill, I think, Bill, you'll have, remember we talked about those hard copies that will be available at Town Hall?
Also wanna pass out at the meeting, because not every.
Right, that's what I mean, you could, I mean, when we were all impressed with those couple of samples in our bibliography, so you'd be able to say that, you know, like.
Those are gonna sell itself, that'll, those'll sell themselves, because.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying at the end.
So I know that when the Dynastorps decided, we got a C P C grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, they wanted a, I believe it was a quarterly report, right, like every two months, I would go on and give them the progress.
Yeah.
Base was completed, but now we're gonna have the roof done, or whatever it was, I would give them the written.
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually a form that you have to submit to them, so that might be something.
They didn't ask for any forms or anything, so I know like.
They wanted to, so that they know what we're doing.
And it's on track, and that hasn't been forgotten, thrown in the back burner.
End of phase three, cause I went for phase one and phase two, cause I had the invoices that I needed to submit, so I could do it at the end of phase three and give an update there, it's in May, yeah. Yep, right, yep. Okay, um, that kinda leads to our next new business, is public outreach, as I was thinking about, kind of like what you, you were thinking, Bill. Educating the public, how are we gonna do it? We've talked about neighborhood meetings, we've talked about brochures, you know, putting a brochure together for the WARC districts, which we have started, Pat and I, we really haven't worked on it, but we can. But I was also thinking, especially where our F Y twenty-three, or F Y twenty-two, our C P C grant proposal that just got approved, deals with Mount Hope, that maybe neighborhood meetings, or a neighborhood meeting here at Town Hall to talk about the area and the pride in their historical homes that they have and their historical area, if that's something we wanna consider doing. Brochures, you know, just people know that, also when our project is ended, that we have a, a showing of our notebooks and, you know, our our base map, our hard copy base map, and products that we have, so the public knows.
Yeah, that would be fun.
With that, and you have a Facebook page too, no?
Yeah, we do, yeah.
I haven't gone to look at it, but, so we could promote that, and then have a link, is a link from the Dyton Facebook page to that?
I don't know, Raph, it's from the website, will you have a link from the Dyton website onto?
The Facebook, Facebook.
Facebook.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
There's a link to the.
There should be a link, yeah.
So you're trying to get people to become aware of it, number one, a lot of people don't even know that we use this, probably.
It's, it, it may be true, but we, these little things that we've done.
How many Dytonians voted last time?
Yeah, right, we'll take that as a metric.
If we go ahead and maybe in May, like public, no, we won't have any products by then.
Maybe we oughta consider, cause they're gonna have their Firecracker Festival again, we'll have our table.
Oh, that's right.
But we should have all our, we should have that report.
Yep.
So some people might be going there, they may have one of the old houses, and they might be interested in seeing one, that's a good way for us to advertise
Yep.
what we do.
I was just thinking, it's too bad it's kinda late now, but obviously, it's past Christmas, but.
Forty weeks?
Well, that's a schoolhouse, could that schoolhouse be, how much does it cost to string some lights around it, or something, I don't even, maybe you do that now? Sorry? The Secregancy.
Yeah, no electric, right?
No, there's, there's no electric in.
You could get temporary electric, yeah.
So anyway, well, that's for Christmas.
Christmas, that you would have it decorated, and you can take those and everything, and just move them so that they look like, you could have a class there, you know.
Can't do it now, because it's electric.
You can't let anyone in there.
Well, you've got to the next Christmas.
I really like the idea of the desk, right, get the desk, bring a pen for firecracker, show a kid a slate, but, but, yeah, as I said, at this point, we have to consider everything kinda contaminated, correct, Ken?
Yeah.
Okay, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do it now, Bill, cause it hasn't passed safety, but it's a great idea to have it.
Does that mean that it, it was inspected and failed, or has it ever?
I would imagine it's failed, right?
Well, what, what's the point of talking? Cause you've never had it inspected.
No, no.
No, it's.
When Tom Pies and I would do some de-letting, we also checked out these things, do I ever seen?
Who?
Tom Pies, the former selectman, Tom and I did some de-letting there.
What's his, what's his, what's his capacity today, well, he's on, oh, Pies, he's on.
Board of Health.
The Board of Health, that's right, well, what's he got to do with the?
Well, feel me finish, Bill, okay, feel me finish, okay? He and I would volunteer to do some de-letting in the building, before we did the de-letting, we wanna make sure that we have these things that scratch the paint, and if it turns a certain color, I think it's pink, it tells you that it's lead. So we know these definitely lead minutes.
But there was also stuff in that folder.
Seventeen seventy-eight, I mean, so about that, it's lead, after that, the paint, so.
Nineteen, nineteen seventy-eight.
It's loose.
Nineteen seventy-eight, okay, so anyway, plans for the future, let's keep that, keep that an idea.
No, but there's our children in them.
And this is a public building.
Yeah, you, you can't just, you know, it's, this kid can't go in because it was nineteen seventy-eight, oh, but you can go. You can't even rent out a building that has led
Right.
to someone with children.
So. Do we have, we want a committee for like, to plan like a neighborhood meeting? Public meeting to invite people to about history? Like to be on that committee.
Is it March?
Yeah.
Let's give it another month to brainstorm, like maybe where it will be.
Okay, I'll put it back on, on the agenda.
What day is good for people?
All right, I'll put it on the agenda for April.
And maybe getting back to the Firecracker Festival, should, maybe should be after that, but we have that date ready for the public that come to the Firecracker event.
That's a good idea, yeah, you can take the flyer or whatever and write.
Some of people are obviously are able to go out. They should have a date by, I think it's July ninth.
It is, yeah.
Firecracker.
Yeah. Found that out this afternoon.
What about the Historical Society, could they? I'll be honest, I don't, I know, I mean, I, part of, I'm a member there, however, they aren't opened that often. I mean, they open weekly, do you have like one day a week?
They're, they've been closed because of COVID.
Okay, but.
And reopening, tentatively right now is planned for March twenty-ninth, one day a week.
Prior to COVID, what, what was the schedule, do you have any days?
It was Tuesday, every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday it was open, okay, that's, that's actually.
I can't say every Tuesday, depending on how many members, but it was.
And that's another way to draw the public in, but you'd have to get it out to them to know that not everybody, except maybe the members, and who know that.
We post on Facebook, we have a Facebook page.
Is that Facebook page linked to the Dyton Facebook?
No.
Could it be?
I know, but there's always so much confusion.
Yeah, that's.
Historical Commission, the Historical Society, and people think it's the same thing, and this is a government, a historical commission, it's a government thing, so.
I don't know, it seems like we're, we're hearing a lot of negative stuff against you, with all due respect. It seems like I hear a lot of.
We're not hearing, but. It's been around for a while, and you, I think, I'd rather have a realistic approach, I, I respect everyone's opinion.
Okay.
Just keep in mind that, that I think you do need plenty of exposure of all kinds of history in the town, not just this commission, but the Historical Society, which is a great resource here in the town, and I don't know how you drum up more.
What you're, yeah, it's.
We'll discuss that at the Historical Society meeting.
So anyway, um, no.
Historical Society, you're talking about.
Okay, okay.
So I had, um, I'll put public outreach and all of that for the next agenda. I had correspondence from Lee Ann Kerwin at the Selectmen's Office, Board of Selectmen's Office, about the annual town meeting schedule. The warrant opens tomorrow, March ninth, April thirteenth it closes, Board of Selectmen votes on articles to be included on April twenty-seventh. The legal review is April twenty-seventh to May eleventh. They sign the warrant, it's posted on the twenty-third, uh, on May twenty-fifth, the Board of Selectmen recommends that warrant articles, and June sixth is annual town meeting. So put that on your calendars. Um, we still have one open spot on our commission, we're looking for a volunteer. As we stated earlier, the Firecracker Festival is July ninth, so um, on the next agenda, we'll have discussion about that. That's all I have.
Has anybody reached out, like, um, for that film position, like either on Facebook or?
The volunteer?
No, no, yeah, like, no one's shown interest yet?
No. You put it on, you put it on the Facebook page, right?
For what?
Uh, for the, um, commission, our empty spot, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, no one's banging down the doors for it, John, we keep trying.
It's on the town website, too.
Yeah, um.
You're looking for incentives. Our selectmen's being used, and that's all the type of committees, but we don't do, there were just so many committees, and so many vacancies. Maybe we can offer like a, a bottle of champagne to.
A bottle. All right.
You didn't talk about the annual report, but I thought you did a good job.
Oh, the annual report, oh, I forgot, oh, I'm so glad you saw that. The annual report is due April fourth, is, any changes, Pat did catch one thing, thank goodness, because I kept reading it the way I wrote it. So it's good, I need a motion to approve the annual report, so move, is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, Rapha?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John? The annual report.
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, okay, did I cover everything on my agenda, please check me.
I think so.
Next meeting's April twelfth.
April twelfth at seven o'clock, and I'll indicate a motion to adjourn, so move, motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it, oops.
Okay, and we're.
Put your vote down.
Right, and let's vote, Rapha?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Pat? Bill? John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, okay, we're adjourned, thank you, and.
Did I miss it?
Eight fifteen.
See you all again.
Good night.
Good night.